And it is seven o'clock. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista, June 17th. And I'd like for you to first join me in pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everybody here this evening, as well as watching on YouTube later on. First, I'll start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, and Peter Vickery. Claudia Lacy is participating in our annual golf, police golf tournament, fundraiser golf tournament. So, and then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Falsky. And then we also have Ann Meyerhoff, who is taking notes, who is our city clerk. And then to my right, we have Brian Grimm, our finance director, David Abel, our community development director, Sarah Sansala is our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven, and then we have Patrick Cummings. Okay, you're not here that often, so I got your first name right. I should've just said Sergeant Patrick, or something like that. Anyway, welcome Patrick, thank you for being here. With that, any additions or changes to the agenda? I don't think so. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No motion.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McGregor got that? So, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we move on to special presentations. We have two lovely ladies here with us this evening. They're with the Harrison Bay Improvement Association, I believe.
Harrison Bay Association.
Okay, thank you.
So, I am Sherry Wallace, I live in Mounds.
I'm Julie Weisenhor, and I also live in Mounds.
So, we are part of the H2OQ committee as part of the Harrison's Bay Association, and that is our water quality committee. And like Holsteds, like Jennings, West Arm, and Harrison's are all impaired bays for water quality due to high nutrient levels. And so, we came together as an association because of that, and we developed this, our slogan is "Soak It Up." What can we do as an organization to not only educate, but also provide services to residents around soaking up the stormwater runoff, which is our number one urban problem today? So, next slide. So, last year, I was in front of you guys, and you all approved a partnership for rain barrel distribution. So, and the number is a little off. The Recycling Association of Minnesota provided the rain barrels. They are made of 100% recycled milk jugs. As an association, we ordered 180 rain barrels. We had pre-ordered them all. And we sold 74 rain barrels for the city of Minnetrista. Fifty-four of those got a discount of $30, 20 provided by the city, and another 10 provided by WSB. The city of Mounds sold 74, also, again, these numbers just got corrected. But they had 60 that applied for the discount. And then we had some additional other communities that sold the rest of them. So, 180 rain barrels were distributed, and we can go to the next slide. Oh, I thought you were going to the next slide. Nope?
Oh, that's the next one.
Okay. All right. So, as part of that, all of the citizens got a QR code to our website. And so, we developed a website with a bunch of different fact sheets, information on how we install it. At the distribution event on May 4th, we actually had demonstration rain barrels, so they could come in and they could see how to cut their gutters and set it up and all of that kind of thing. So, we have resources on our website, and then I'll have you go to the next slide. So, just to talk about rain barrels, 80%, of rain barrel owners use the rain barrels for lawn and garden watering. One person, one rain, if they use it in normal ways during the peak of the summer, which right now we've had so much rain, right? There's no way you can use all the rain in a rain barrel, because there's so much rain. But 1,300 gallons a year of water savings, so, you know, add a 74th rain barrel there, and you're talking about over 96,000 gallons of water per year can be saved with just this year's rain barrels. So, thank you for agreeing to partner with us on that. And, you know, our question is here, are you interested in partnering further, doing this again? I don't know if Jasper gave you any feedback? I know he talked to me a little bit about it, but...
Yeah, I think it was very educational, number one, and it really, also, it provides our educa, part of us, it, we need to do an educational piece for stormwater and for water quality, and that kind of fits that bill really well. So, I think we definitely will want to participate again. It was a great program, so...
So, I wanted to turn it over to Julie Weisenhor. She is an educator at the University of Minnesota Extension Series. So, if you want to talk about the next...
Yeah, so, I am a University of Minnesota Extension Horticulture educator, so I spend my days speaking with the general public, talking about great plant selection, sustainable landscape design, also talking about things like managing stormwater runoff. So, how do you do that in a landscape? It's sometimes difficult to explain to somebody in depth about how to redesign your landscape in, you know, five minutes or less. But things like having rain barrels, doing some simple changes to their landscape, all those sort of things are things that I participate in and offer to the Harrison Bay Association and our fellow folks around the area. So, helping with the public education outreach, and then also working with people on those stormwater pollution presentations and information. So, next slide. We have a great website, a lot of it is University of Minnesota research-based information. This comes from our water quality folks, comes from our design people, I'm one of those people. We talk about things like choosing the right plants, a lot of native plants and native cultivars that can tolerate those wet feet, so to speak, and also tolerate the drought, because the past three summers have been really, really dry. And you may be wondering, like, why are we worried about rain barrels at this point when we're way into the drought the past few years? But the important thing is to talk about in bigger picture about how do we manage water, but also how do we plan for these fluctuations that we have in water, from drought to flooding, which we're now under flood watch today. We also talk about lawn care, too. So, lawns are a big part of landscapes. Not everybody wants a lawn, but a lot of people do. There's a lot of great benefits to lawns, but how do you manage those lawns in a good way that prevents water from flowing off those lawns into the landscape? And how much fertilizer do you actually need on lawns? What kinds of turf species should you use that require less fertilizer and also can tolerate less, less water as well, so benefiting us in that respect, too? Also thinking about things like lakefront buffers, really important around the lakes area that we all enjoy here. What kinds of plants should you use? How big should they be? We have information on that. Rain gardens, we install a rain garden at Apple Lane in Mounds. You're welcome to come and take a look at it. I'm sure it's gotten tons of use in the past week or so. And then again, talking about rain barrels and the benefits of that. So, next slide. We want people to keep water on their property. We want them to either collect it, rain barrels, have a way that that, you know, reduce the compaction of their soil, so that water can percolate down into their aquifers below the ground. And so, we want to talk about that, too. We don't want people having a lot of water running off into our gutters and going then in, carrying the nutrients from plant materials into our lakes and streams. Next slide. The last one.
That's it, yep.
So, I think, I think the big thing is here is we created kind of these links to other resources that we're providing our association residents with on an ongoing basis. And so, the question would be, how can we help you, right? And are there some things that we can do to help you with that? On January 1st, I was appointed to the Winnie-Hawha Creek Watershed Citizens Advisory Board to represent the west metro areas. And so, part of that is really kind of looking at how can we gather information from the cities, Minnetrista, Mounds, Long Lake, to understand what your needs are, what your priorities are. And you've taken on, I know you've probably been involved in updates on the Six Mile Creek and the improvements done at the Six Mile Creek. But in 2025, we're going to be starting a project with Peters Creek, and starting to assess the pollution that's coming through Peters Creek. And I think Peter knew that, right?
I do. I've paid attention.
And we've had some conversations with you in the past. And so, I think what, what we want, what I want to do is be part of that Citizens Advisory Board, to make sure that I understand what your needs are, understand how we can partner with you, and having Julie as a resource, as being part of the U of M, is phenomenal. And I, I think that, you know, we'd like to have a few more conversations about that. I'd love to be involved in any way, we'd all love to be involved in any kind of educational events you have around stormwater. I am also a water steward with the Minnesota Water Steward, so we want to make sure that people understand how their runoff is negatively impacting our waters today, so...
Well, thank you. Tonight, we can't give you that answer. I think we'd have to...
No, no, I wanted to open that.
Yes, thank you, yeah, yeah.
But I think you would like us to probably work with Jasper specifically on rain barrels, how many you want to supplement and that kind of thing.
Yes, he's, I've already talked to him, so he's aware. So, go ahead and contact him. The council's on board, so this is great. Yeah, if we can think of some opportunities to, for education or other information, we'll definitely be in touch or, yeah, talk to you again. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Okay. Were you at Trista Day? I don't think so, right? Sherry, were you at? Okay, so that might be an opportunity next year to be at Trista Day.
I was at Trista Day.
It was May 19th? It's us, usually the third Saturday or second Saturday, second Saturday, third Saturday in May?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah. Okay, well, check out our website at the beginning of the year, and it's usually like the third Saturday in May, and you could have a table with information and talk to people, which would be great. Okay? Great, thank you. Good idea. All right. I don't think anybody signed up under persons to be heard, and so we'll move on to consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to pull? Otherwise, they approve our work session meeting minutes from June 3rd, 2024, approve our city council meeting minutes from June 3rd, 2024, a resolution to approve claims, and approve the temporary liquor license for Northwest Tonka Lions, and then E is Woodland Cold Water Main Improvements, advertisement forbids. Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E?
No motion.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We move on to our public hearings, which we have none this evening, so we'll move on to business items. The first item is a conditional use permit for the 3330 Highland Road. It was not on our consent agenda. The reason it wasn't is because we had a split vote on that. So, I'll let David kind of recap real quick, and then we'll take the vote.
Sure, yeah, thank you, mayor and members of the council. As the mayor just mentioned, this was at your first meeting in June for review and consideration. The council heard public testament and comments on the proposed conditional use permit for a farm winery at Highland Road. There was a split vote, it was a 3-2 vote to direct staff to bring back a resolution that would approve that conditional use permit for a farm winery. The resolution is attached in your packet with conditions as, as they were discussed at that meeting, specific to alcohol on the site, and those types of changes have been made to the resolution that's part of your packet for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, David. Any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, then. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 53-24 for a conditional use permit at 3330 Highland Road?
No motion.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-1. Ms. Refkin, nay. So, next, we'll move on to the water treatment plant task order, and we have Grant, what is your last name again? I'm sorry.
Meyer.
Meyer.
M-E-Y, E-M-R.
Oh, Meyer, all right. So, we have Grant Meyer here this evening, standing in for Aaron Volmer, who is away with his family on vacation, I guess. Hope he's, like you said, hope he's having a good time. So, with that, again, welcome, thank you for coming, and I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Well, thank you, mayor, members of the council. I'm standing in for Aaron Volmer tonight. I've spent, I guess, half the better part of 10 years working together with Aaron closely on water treatment infrastructure, and appreciate all the work we've had, the opportunity with Minnetrista so far, as we're preparing for the future of the water utility here, and really appreciate the work so far, looking forward to taking the next step together, and in part, guess asking for authorization to proceed with design, but also want to make sure everybody's comfortable with where we're at, what it looks like going forward, and answer the questions the council has before we take these next steps forward.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sure we have questions.
I'm sure, I will spare you a long presentation, I assume everyone knows the technical details of us for where we're at today, so I don't need to go back over all of that.
So, I'm, I'm gonna start, I'm just gonna go down the line. Peter, we'll start with you, if you have questions or comments, and then we're gonna go to Ann, and, and then we'll come back again, of course, if something triggers and you want to ask more questions.
I think just a very general overview would be helpful, because I've been buried in maybe reading enough here, so maybe if you could just kind of give us a high-level summary.
High level of the piece itself, or kind of the project?
The project, so...
Sure, well, the project will be a new water treatment facility with the city of Minnetrista in the southern area, 2,100 gallons a minute, so about 3 million gallons a day, additional treatment capacity. It will include two of the new wells, which I believe are currently under construction, and the city also looks to decommission or take a couple of existing wells out of service, understand wells that traditionally result in maybe some customer complaints, as a result in staying for high levels of iron and magnesiums in those wells. So, transition to some new wells, increase the treatment capacity, aligning more with the city's goals or comprehensive planning for 2040, as we look up to the future, provide adequate expansion for the growing community, as well as treating the water quality to, within primary and secondary treatment standards, addressing some of those primarily iron and magnesium concerns. So, 2,100 gallon a day treatment capacity for a new treatment facility in the southern city that will treat the two new wells and complement the city's existing water treatment infrastructure in that area.
Thank you.
Ann, questions?
No. Sounds like a good project.
I, I think it would be a fantastic project if the city asked us to do it.
How do we move up the goal of completing the design by March?
Jasper?
Yeah.
We can, I can certainly work with the project team on how quickly we can do that. Moving things forward, I would be as strong, to the extent that we can accomplish it responsibly and get through good decision-making with the city and our team, certainly the earlier we can bid in the year would be better for a lot of reasons, not for least, as which I think everybody kind of likes to be on the front end of contractors and filling up their schedule.
Yes.
So, being aggressive as we can is certainly understandable. I don't have a solid answer for you right now, but I think that I'll certainly work with Aaron, the team, on if there's opportunities to move that along with the project.
So, I think when we first started out, we were under the impression that it would be about a six-month design process. So, I was somewhat, and I think that's what Ms. Refkin is referencing, is when we saw a nine-month design process, end of March, we know from a lot of our construction that we've done here, that's not a great bidding climate, and we are very, very, very concerned about the bottom line on this project, the bottom number. And the further out we go, especially you get into end of March, if that's the end design, you're not even bidding it until April sometime. So, that's not a good bidding climate, as you just stated, we know that. So, we really need to move this up. Really need to move this up, so... And then the other thing is, I did ask Jasper about this, we discussed this a little bit about the, the dollar amount, and it's not to exceed, I understand, except that there's, I think Ms. Refkin pointed out earlier that, in our conversation, that it did not include additional footings, foundation, if depending on the soils. So, can you maybe explain a little bit about that? I think she had some questions on that.
Yeah, my, my understanding from the site as it is today is we really need to get the geotechnical work done, have a real understanding of what that, what the foundation is, and even when we look at the estimated opinion of construction cost at this point, and relative to some of the contingency, understanding what that foundation system looked like could be a big driver of construction costs for us there.
But it would also drive engineering costs, or not? Would it or not? Would it add more engineering costs? Let me ask you that way. I know. I'm assuming...
Within what we have, we could do, we could do a lot, I think, depending, if that geotechnical came back, that was, was something very crazy, we may have another discussion.
Right.
We can do a lot with what's in there now.
Okay, so if, if...
We would come back to it and be 100% candid if, if the geotech was, if there was something incredibly unusual, and they bring us back here to have another discussion about that, I don't think that we're gonna find anything so un, or I don't think we're gonna find so unusual that it's a big engineering difference.
It might be more structural, though.
Construction, construction cost, if we get into different types of deep foundation systems, could, could drive different discussions as far as construction costs.
And the geotechnical stuff, that is, again, an extra cost to us, correct?
That is, yeah, that's not separate.
Is it brown? Who do you, who do we usually use?
We use brown.
Brown, brown, okay. Is that who?
If I may.
I'm sorry.
So, my apologies. So, A2S did reach out to WSB to bring forward, requesting to bring forward a proposal for geotechnical and surveying services for that site, and there was just a miscommunication on the timing of A2S's proposal versus ours for the geotechnical. So, we anticipate, I'll be bringing that forward through either Gary or Jasper to make sure A2S is, is comfortable with what we're proposing, and then bring that to council for consideration at the next meeting.
Okay, so, yeah.
How long does that take, the geotechnical survey?
Um, the geotechnical, I'd have to take a look back, but we would have it, we, we anticipated having it back within six weeks of, of authorization.
Because that's kind of a problem, because...
If we can't start designing it, if we don't have that, so that, I mean, that's delaying it at least.
See, because we don't have another meeting for another four weeks, and then if it takes six weeks to do that, now we're talking two and a half months from now before, can, are you starting to design it prior to that?
We will ask, we start other aspects of design as well.
Okay.
We wouldn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves with these structural things, or have to rework or unwind things, but the structural part is just one aspect to design. We would absolutely be green lighting, especially with the sense of urgency around the 50s, we would absolutely be green lighting as much as we possibly could with council.
So, let me ask you something, Allison, is there any chance of bumping that proposal up, and maybe a special meeting, maybe with two or three of us or something?
I could certainly talk to staff about that, and see if that's something, I just, I, I'm getting, I, I need to get it finalized to send to Gary, or assuming it be this week, it would be Jasper, since Gary's out, to make sure that, that would be something that they can coordinate with A2S, because we want to make sure that the proposal is hitting all the marks with A2S.
No, I, I get that. Maybe what you could do is...
Ballpark, how much do you think it would cost?
Hmm, I believe it was over $100,000.
For the geotech?
For the geotech?
Well, let me just...
No, that doesn't sound right.
I have no idea. Because I know that there's certain amounts that you can, that you can authorize...
That sounds too much.
You know it's a large project.
I know it's a large project, yeah. I think that's a bit high. So, let's do this. Allison, if you can connect with Jasper this week, and like I said, if there's two or three council members, we could get together briefly to authorize that prior to the 15th, because, again, we don't want to wait that long to... So, even if, you know, the 8th or 9th of July were to work, or sooner?
Well, if they can get the paperwork, we can meet before the end of the month, even.
Right, okay.
I mean...
And then, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because I would be around by the end of the month. I mean, if we could meet that last week.
Certainly.
Okay.
I'll, I'll work with staff.
Okay, all right. So, then you can work faster.
Absolutely. And that did give me just a moment to confirm the comments in the task order agreement as well. It, it was clear about the deep, deep foundations. So, if we got into a situation where we were doing a deep pile structure, I think that's a different conversation we'd want to have comprehensively, not only with the engineering part of that, but also the impact on construction cost as well, as that would be a significant understanding.
That's why we are very interested in getting that done sooner than later, and, and also knowing some of those costs, potential costs, so, all right. And then, so, timing was in those, those deep foundation things, and then, oh, all right, I think we need to have a little conversation on budget. So, I don't know if you know this or not, but we have about 2,200 water accounts. 97% of them are residential, and we're only growing by about 100 and 120 new homes a year, so it's not like a huge new, new homes that are going to be paying for this. And so, we need to be very, very careful on every dollar and penny that we spend on this. So, we want to make sure that you understand that we can't go Cadillac, we have to go VW. Bug. So, I don't know what, where that puts us, but I think we probably want to be somewhere in the 15, 14, 15 million dollar range, or less. If there's special things, eliminate all the bells and whistles for now, and we'll see where, and then we'll talk about those maybe as we move along, but we really need to keep it very utilitarian. And then, another question, steel or concrete tanks? What's your opinion, and what's the cost difference, and what are the, some of the advantages and disadvantages?
Right now, I think the team is leaning heavily toward concrete filters, and any number of drivers, but given what you had just suggested, I think that, as I understand it, the estimate is about $4 million less expensive to go with concrete...
Concrete, okay.
...as opposed to the steel.
I think we have concrete in our current ones, is that correct?
No.
No, we have steel?
There's steel.
Okay, okay.
Which would have been one of the benefits, is perhaps familiarity.
Yeah.
But...
But they operate similar. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's life expectancy or whatever, isn't it, and maintenance, maybe?
Yes.
Yes.
For all practical purposes, concrete lasts quite a long time, and from an operational standpoint, it isn't, it isn't wildly different. The operation's very similar.
Okay. Those are the questions I had. Timeline, and then, okay, one more question. 2,100 gallons per minute, so do we even have the storage capacity to, to handle another 3 million gallons a day?
It's a, it's a, it's a balance of water production and storage.
And use.
It is where, so long as it ultimately fits within the city's budget expectations, I think that's, 2,100 gallons a minute is where you want to be, and I think probably the last thing that you would want to compromise as you look at construction of the treatment facility.
Is the size.
I think it'll put you in a better, I think it'll put you in a much better place as you look toward the future, look to grow. There's other things that we may be able to do to manage some of the costs associated with the insurance here and there. I think as you look hor, as you look up toward the future, it's going to be... I think as you look, as you look up toward the future, it's going to be much more costly to add those gallons of capacity in the future than if we can get that.
Okay.
Even if it needs to be a little utilitarian right now, even if we can get it in the, in that framework, that's, I think, about the last place I would recommend cutting is on capacity.
I was only asking because I think at one time it said 2,700 somewhere, I read, and so now it's 21. So that's good. That's good. I just wanted to make sure that we don't have so much, that it's, it's the storage capacity. If we, if we're doing, if we're filtering or have the capacity to filter 2,100 additional gallons per minute, but we don't have the capacity to store it, then we're kind of up against a wall again, and now we have to build more storage, so.
Well, it also allows us, if something happens with the current treatment plant, to take that offline and still have the treatment capacity for two chambers of air.
Absolutely. From a maintenance standpoint, or catastrophic failure standpoint, if you lost the existing treatment facility or going back and forth. So from a flexibility and operation standpoint, it doesn't afford you a lot of resiliency in that.
All right. That's it.
Can I maybe ask one?
Yeah, sure.
Maybe just to give context, so I know me and Jasper even talked about this briefly, but, because I know what the nine-month timeline of the design, so how many hours, just out of curiosity, go into like preliminary design and final, and I'm obviously a math guy, a numbers guy, so I, I see just the dollar amounts, the 370 and the 667,000. So, and maybe that'll even help the council, I mean, is that 3,000 hours for preliminary design and 6,000 for final design? Or, I don't, or is there, what's a average, or what's a standard amount of time and engineering time that needs to go into designing a water treatment plant, I guess, for those phases?
Sure. I, I'm not exactly sure what. If we assume this was standard, I'm not exactly sure standard, some of the things would be higher more. For, for this one specifically, A2S has, let's, let's say we have about 75% of the project, so this is not, this is not including the architectural and mechanical work in the numbers I'm about to give you, but there's just under 4,800 hours, just under 4,800 hours total in the project. Roughly a third of that, maybe a little over a third, 35, 38%, roughly, is in the upfront optimization jar testing in the preliminary design. It takes us to, right, between 35 and 40% of the budget, roughly. Then with the other roughly 3,000 hours being, the lion's share, 2,800 of that is final design, and then about 200 hours for the bidding phase and services and getting through that part of the process.
Okay.
Jasper just texted, he thought the geo tech should be around, less than 10,000.
Yeah, I was thinking like 10, 10 to 15 is what I was thinking, but...
So then we wouldn't need a special meeting, is it?
He could authorize it. I think he's...
Up to 10, so he, 10-ish, right? No, 10 is the, what is the policy?
Yeah, I see, I think it is. So then, okay, so that's, thanks, so here's a question. Council, would you like to authorize tonight Jasper to award a contract up to 15,000 for the geotechnical work that WSB is going to have to do? And they're going to coordinate and all that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do you, Sarah, do we need a motion to that effect? Thank you. So is there a motion to authorize our city administrator Jasper Krugel to go ahead and execute a contract up to $15,000 for the geothermal, or geotechnical, I'm sorry, evaluation?
Survey?
No motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. So Kathleen made that, and Peter seconded that. Any further discussion or questions? And Sarah, is that motion adequate? Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Hopefully that will help you move things along faster.
I appreciate that. I appreciate you on the schedule and...
I, I do know, and one of the, besides the, the dollar amount, we, we are under pressure, if you will, to get more water. And I know Gary sweats it out a lot of times, so we don't want to give him a heart attack. So we want to move this along as fast as possible.
I think it would be a fantastic project for the city.
It, it will be.
If we're working together, continuing the path.
Yeah. And the, the compensation, again, I spoke with Jasper on this, and we compared it to S E H, that did our other two water treatment plants, and percentage-wise, it's actually a little bit lower. So we're, we're right in percentage-wise of the total project costs, we're, we're right there. So I think it's right around 8, 9%, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around there. So, so we're, I think we're pretty good there. And I know you guys will do an excellent job and work closely with Gary and, and staff on, on, on all of the details. So anything else? Otherwise, I do need a motion to approve the scope and authorize plans and specifications for the water treatment plant, which is task order number 11 for A2S.
No motion.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We didn't grill you too hard, did we?
No, no, thank you so much. I was hoping we were working together. You say we're grilling for error and future...
There you go.
We were working through all the workshops and all the decisions and all the price factor.
And we'll tell them you told us to do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for coming.
Yeah. All right. Then we'll move on to administrative items. Are there any staff reports?
I do need a liaison for our, the 24th meeting in June here for...
For planning, okay. I cannot be there.
I can be there.
You can be there, okay. Claudia will be. Is the council okay with that? Okay, we're approving Claudia for the planning commission. Any other staff reports? Okay, so a couple things real quick. We had to, we had to cancel the bus tour because of inclement weather, and it wasn't as bad as they said it was going to be, but they were talking possible hail and, and, you know, just all kinds of stuff. And so between all of us, staff and myself, we decided for everybody's safety and convenience, who wants to get out, you know, in the pouring rain, we decided to cancel it. We haven't rescheduled a date yet. We're talking about rescheduling a date, probably in August or somewhere in that range. So we'll keep you posted on that. Kathleen and I, I think, will be attending the fire district meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
Yeah, okay. As you all know, this is not my favorite time of day. And so we will be reporting back on that with you. And then also, Claudia, you weren't here, but in the work session, we gave a report on the meeting that we had with, regarding C Mar. We'll talk to you about that later. And let's see, what else was there? I think that was the main, the main thing. So also, just so you know, the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference is the end of the month, and I am signed up to go. If anybody else wants to go, it's a lot of fun. All right. With that, any other reports?
Ann and I are attending a personnel committee meeting tomorrow to discuss staffing for 2025.